Okay, so this is the Rutland Town Planning Commission and it's May 14th, 2020. And we are doing this by Zoom and by phone tonight. So bear with us if you're watching this recording because we have not done this as a group before. So let's start by taking the attendance, just in case we've missed anyone. Howard's on the line. Norm's on the line. Jim is on the line. Sherman's on the line. Andy. Dana. Mary Beth. And Jerry, are you there? Everyone but Jerry. Anyone from the public out there?
No, there's the nine, nine plus.
Okay. Okay. So we'll move on to approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Second from? Any discussion? All those in favor of the agenda say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, no public, so no public comment. We'll move on to new business. And so since we met last time, Dana did some research on, it was National Historic Register Properties, right Dana?
Yes, that's correct.
And we've tried to, we've reached out to the Railroad Museum. Bill has done some of that. Reached out to Frank Choffey. And I think we just last couple of days got another name of Matt Rockwell. Bill, you want to fill us in a little bit about some of the things they've been saying to us?
I spent a while talking with Frank about the building and he said that the museum does not own the building. They are merely a tenant. The state of Vermont owns the building. They rent it from them. He said that moving the building was probably an ambitious goal. He said it's a very old building and very fragile. So moving it would be, he said, he said it would be upwards of a million dollar price tag to move that building and have it survive. So he said, you know, if we wanted, if we wanted to talk to him tonight, we'd have to call him. So we're not able to do that on this event. But I don't know if something we want to actively pursue, we'd have to find some serious donors to that kind of project happen.
I was thinking about that. I mean, it may be to our benefit that the state is the owner. Not in these economic times, but in more normal economic times, I would think they might be interested in making more of that museum. And, and you know, maybe providing some state funding for that.
Yeah, I can talk with Matt. I can give him a call also. I don't, Frank's planning on moving to Western New York, so I'm not sure how much longer he's going to be involved with the museum here, but we certainly can talk to some other people and see what they have to say.
Bill, I'm having a little bit of trouble here. Could you sit a little, a little closer or get this?
Come closer.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
You said you were thinking of calling Matt, you said?
Yeah, we got another name from Fred Nicholson. We got another name of somebody who could, who could help us.
So in the, in the Business Route 4 study, the smart growth one, for the museum, it suggests that we work with the owners and operators to gauge their interest and enthusiasm for expanding the existing railroad museum and suggest we review potential sites. So, and then it gives a price tag for planning and design. Some of this is 25,000 to 50,000. And then of course it has some suggestions for funders. But I think there's two things, I'd still like to talk to the museum people. And I think probably, I'm speaking for the group, we probably want to get them in and talk about, you know, whether it's enlarging it, making it more prominent, and/or I guess moving it.
Yeah. It'd be good to see whether there's any interest on their parts to any of those.
Right. Even if they don't own the building, right?
Right, yeah.
Barbara, last week Dana and I took a ride, bike ride, last weekend.
Yep.
And stopped by and kind of walked around. And I'm always speaking for me, Dana certainly chime in. It's a beautiful site where the pocket park is planned for. I don't know who owns the land. There's a big parking lot. I'm sorry? There's a big parking lot and then a large grass area that includes this very old bridge. So two things occurred to me. One, it would be wonderful if they could recite the museum. It would just draw people in and it would give it more, conceivably give it more visibility. And, you know, really make that area an attraction, assuming we can, whoever's doing it can deal with the bridge and get funding to upgrade that. Because right now it's, it would be a hazard if it wasn't improved. But aesthetically, it's a gorgeous sight.
Yeah.
And then you'll read Dana?
Yeah, it was wonderful. We looked at a space where we could, if we located the building, the building could be relocated, you could actually see it. You can't see it from the street right now. And so if it were angled, it would serve as an attraction. It would be strategically located near the iron bridge and at the end of the parking lot. And so it would be a great, it would be a great asset for that area of the pocket park.
So I did find out that that older unused railroad bridge belongs to Earl's Truck Repair.
To who?
Earl's Truck Repair. That's private property.
Really?
Yeah, that, that, that bridge went with the property when they bought it. So it's, it belongs to, it belongs to them.
Yeah. So there's someone who keeps moving their phone and I'm having trouble following some of the conversation because of it.
I'm having the same trouble.
I think it's Howard's.
Oh, sorry. I have a suggestion that when you're not talking, you mute it? Because I think it might be feedback when people are talking.
That's it.
So if we, well, let's try all muting and then just try to remember to unmute when you talk.
The people on the phones, I don't think can mute though.
No, they can't. It's coming, it's coming from Howard's landline. So that's why when I muted it, 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 it's away.
Oh, okay.
So how do we know when he wants, he needs to talk?
You don't, so I gotta, I gotta leave him open because he can't.
Does he have no mic? Does he have a mic on his phone? Well, maybe he doesn't understand. Maybe his phone's just moving. He may have it in his hand, moving it.
Are you hearing any of this Howard?
Quiet now.
Bill, does he not have a microphone?
He's on a, he has his computer on and he's on a landline, so he's two connections, but the phone one is the one that keeps coming in with the audio.
So pardon my ignorance, is the reason he's on too is because he has no audio on?
I think because he has no microphone on his computer at home.
Can, can you just put him on the phone on his landline, Bill?
That's where the interference.
I'm on my cell phone.
No, it's not, Jim, you're fine. It's not you. It's Howard's phone connection.
If Howard muted himself on his phone, from his phone, because there should be none.
He's on a, he's not on a cell phone. He's on, he's actually calling in from his, his house landline phone.
It still has a mute function. Isn't it star six to mute a landline?
Well, you did it Howard, you did it.
Yep, you did.
I see Howard's phone as being muted on my screen.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Howard, just unmute yourself when you need to say something, but this is much clearer for everyone else.
I think it's star six to unmute too. If that's what works, I don't know.
That makes perfect sense, Mary Beth. So, okay, any other discussion tonight about the museum? We'll try to get them at our next meeting, the fourth, and then we probably want to find out who the state agency is and maybe get some folks down from the state at some point too, to just kind of further this discussion.
Yeah.
It sounds like, it's, it sounds like a very complicated project to put together, but you know, it doesn't have to happen in an instant. And it won't.
Right. Well, the pocket park is not the simplest one either. The pocket park is not that simple either.
I don't know who owns that land.
Green Mountain Power.
Owns the grass part and.
The whole thing, yep.
And the parking lot?
The, the, basically the entire, well, the parking lot's kind of in the town's right of way, but everything else, basically the entire project area is owned by Green Mountain Power.
It's part of their right of way?
It's part of their land.
We're talking about two different things also in this conversation. One is, one is the railway and the other is the pocket park.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. And, and how do people feel about the current location of the museum? Is that just a lost cause? Or could it be made, could, you know, there be better signage and, and, you know, other ways to make it more prominent so that people know it's there, which is kind of a problem right now. I don't think anyone knows it's there.
Signage is tough to get put up. I mean, you have, it's tough to get permission to put up signs along the state road and that's, and that's Business Route 4 because it's in the town, so it's a state road. So they have a sign they put out for their open house when they're there for the museum during, on Saturdays, but they can't even do that right now. So there isn't a lot of signs, so I think it'd be more of just creating the awareness around it rather than signs. I think, you know, if we do, if you do a public awareness rather than signs, you're going to get more, more out of it.
Yeah. Yeah.
You can influence signs also some, can't you Barbara?
I'm sorry?
I said you have some influence or some mechanism to at least suggest signs through the planning commission, don't you? The regional planning commission?
Yeah, I think there are some things we could do and, and I still think the connection between, you know, the ownership of the building being the state and whatever restrictions there are on the state highway right now, there might be some options there of working Yeah. So the signs aren't going up now for Saturday's bill because of the paving?
Right. Well, let me see here. Let's see if, let's see if this works. I'm going to try something here. We're going to see if this works. All right, hold on. Ready? Ah, there we go. Okay. So, you guys see that?
Yes.
Yeah, but it's working. Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
This, where you see the river running like, kind of like right to left, where it says GMPC on the left-hand side, that's the entire project area for the, for the pocket park.
Oh.
Okay.
So I don't know if my highlighter works in this thing or not, but we'll see here in a second. So like this right here is the whole project park area.
Right.
And that's definitely Mountain Power.
Town Hall is up in the top left corner, just off.
Kind of. Well, this, this is Depot Lane right here. And so the railroad museum's like right here.
I'm not seeing what right here, oh.
Oh.
Help us, where's Town Hall? Where's Town Hall?
Hold on. Let me, so I'll go back, I'll go back to here. I'll make another one here.
It's really good, Bill.
Yeah, I know, right? It's pretty.
Nice.
All right, so there we go. Do you see my cursor?
Yes.
Yeah.
So Town Office is right here.
Okay.
No.
So kind of Rutland Town Office. And then go down the road, here's Depot Lane. And then down Depot Lane, it's, it's right in here. It's actually not even on the parcel map, but it's right there.
And that's Vermont Railway property?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's where the two rail lines come together, so it's not behind the office. It's kind of behind this, this area right here, but they, so you come down Depot Lane into this private road, which is for Caris Reels. So this is Caris Reels right here. And then you come down Depot Lane and turn left and the railroad museum is right here in this big wide white spot.
Isn't there a sign somewhere along there?
They have a fold-up sign they put on the corner of Depot Lane and Business 4.
Okay.
On Saturdays for their, for their open house.
Yeah.
So Bill?
Yeah.
What about a, what about a brown historic monument sign? The state should be able to authorize that.
I would think so. There is.
What registers is it on Dana?
National, Register of National Historic Sites, but it has to be registered through the state. That was the research that I did. So it has to be, it's a federal register, but you have to get it approved by your state in order for it to go back on. So that's, that's one of the tricky things about moving the building. Moving the building might have to, depending on how it gets done, you might have to deregister and reregister it with the new location. But it would have to go through the state, I believe, if that's what I said in my email to the planning commission.
So keep it on state land?
Right.
If you look at that area right around where it is right now, if you go too far down, you drop back over into Caris Reels' property where their truck garage used to be, which is like right around here-ish. But you get over into private property over there. So anything beyond the tracks is, is Caris Reels' land. So there isn't a lot of state land to move it to, so there'd be, not only do we have to move the building, but we've got to have some place for it to actually go.
So when Norman and I were there, we were having difficulties with the boundaries and there were several big boulders. Do you know where those big boulders are located? That was delimiting a parking lot area. Is that on the other side of this track?
Uh, hang on, a second.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah. That's what, that's what my car aspires to be like. Let's see. Okay.
There you go.
So there's the railroad museum right there. And that's tucked right into the corner of that switch.
Right. Which makes this back door, if you open the back door, you're practically on that railroad track.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So this is not state property, right?
Well, it kind of is like in here, like they own where the tracks are, so let me go.
What's south of the tracks where it says Depot Lane?
So, yeah. So Depot Lane comes down and the, where Depot Lane comes down.
Yep.
Is Depot, like everything on this side is state, everything on this side is Caris Reels, everything down here is Caris Reels.
Okay.
Like there's some gray property here.
Yep.
There's this.
Yeah.
That used to be Rutland Plywood, but that's not municipal property.
That's too far, that's too far away.
Well, yeah, I mean, it is, but.
Is there any municipal property down that way?
No. No, that's.
I guess, I guess the thought Dana and I had was that without any knowledge of who owned what, and it's still not clear to me despite your efforts, Bill, and I'm sure it's to me, not you, but there was around, there were these large boulders and.
You can see them on there Norman. They're white in the green area just below the southern Depot Lane mark. Yeah, right there, Bill. That's it. Those are where the rocks are.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So this used to be a garage. And it, it may have caught fire several years ago and does not exist anymore. But that's still, that's here.
Yep.
And that's Caris Reels' property?
It's Caris Reels' property, yeah.
And, but it's across the railroad tracks from the next, their building.
Yeah.
So interestingly, Bill, Norman and I had no idea where the property lines were. We were actually asking ourselves questions about that. And I thought Caris Reels was just on the other side of the river, on the same side as the, in between the railroad tracks, which is C-F-R-E-L-L-C.
Yep, they're on both sides, so they're here and here.
We didn't realize that. Well, we realized Caris Reels was over here, we just didn't know whose property it was down tucked into the corner there.
Yep.
We thought it might be municipal because of the stones, like.
Yeah.
Marking it off. Anyway, if you go back to the, the aerial view. Yep. And you, and you zoom in, we were thinking that where those rocks are, where it makes that angle on the left side, yep, right there, going north and then heading east, we were thinking that the best location for the railroad station would be Caddy Corner from the cornerstone in the lower left, heading northwest. And so you draw your cursor up to the left, yep, that way. That's where we thought the, the rail, the rail museum would be most visible from the street.
From, not Route 4?
Depot Lane. Well, yes, from, yes, from, well, from Business Route 4. Because if you look, you go down Depot Lane and we could see the cars going right by Depot Lane and we would be able to see the rail museum if it were in that corner.
Yeah. And that's the old garage, you're saying, Bill?
Right here is where it was, yeah.
Yeah. Well, let's see, Howard, do you have anything to add here?
And he's still muted. Hold on, there we go.
Howard?
Now try it.
Howard, do you have, do you want, do you have any pearls of wisdom for us?
Uh, no, I'd say, but Bill, Bill covered it very well. It's, you know, it's what it is. It's Caris Reels owns all that property and then Earl's Truck Repair owns the bridge. But it's, it's a tough move. When you talk about being able to see the railroad from Route, from Business Route 4, I don't know, you're not going to see it unless you start driving down Depot Lane. I mean, it's, it's, it's something that you've got to be driving down Depot Lane to be able to visualize that thing. So I'm not sure how much greater exposure it's going to create by putting it down there as far as Business Route 4 goes.
Well, I don't know either. My sense is that if we could get that property either by purchase, lease, or donation, that the setting is just much more attractive. We hit it on a day where the sun was as bright as today, the grass had just been cut. I mean, it was as bucolic as you can imagine. And it just bespoke of park. And if that were the focus and there were a few picnic tables around it and somehow we could get more publicity, it looks like a, you know, something to think about. I mean, it is complicated. It certainly is complicated. I don't think heightened visibility, I mean, there's, is the first thing on the agenda to sell.
No, absolutely not. I agree with you Norman.
And, but the, the overall appeal is significant. And if you take, if you take five minutes just to go down Depot Lane and look at that grassy area and it comes around, Bill, that is the, it's hard to know which direction, but it comes around as the entire grassy area along the perimeter of the parking lot, for lack of a better word, over here, on the right, where the, where the, where the train is now.
Okay.
There's what appears to be a parking lot there.
Right.
And then there's this grassy area, yeah, right. Then there's this grassy area that surrounds it both on the sort of west side of.
Billy's back where I was earlier.
Depot Lane and then.
Here?
Yep.
And then bordering the bridge and then off to the right some. Is that whole property owned by, the whole grassy area owned by Caris Reels?
Yeah. So.
Yes.
You see the right-hand side now? So Caris Reels, this is their plant. This is where the truck garage is. They own a strip right down through here, all the way, this is their bolt manufacturing plant, which is.
We went by that. Norman and I went by that.
Yep, that's building there. Is this building here? So they own, that goes right into here. And then the bulk of this is all belonging to the former Rutland Plywood Company. So it's all, it's all, it's owned between Caris Reels, Mariah Group, and the railway.
Yep.
And the, they got, and they're not going to get, I mean, the railway's not going to give up anymore. That's, that's, they're, that's what they have and that's, that's what they're going to keep, so.
And the plywood factory area is obviously for sale.
It is for sale, yep.
That's the Mariah Group?
Yeah, but like, like you're saying, I mean, you know, the part of the, and I, I mean, I don't know how many of you have actually been inside the museum, but it's pretty neat. And there's windows, so, so this building right here, so this is, this is the original train station. This is a caboose, which they are working to restore slowly. This is the, this is the building that has their, they have an operating model train layout in there. And there's a window in that room and when trains go by, you can see them. And so, I mean, that's, that's a pretty neat thing to have a train museum right there to have operating trains go by. So, you know, it's like, like we've said, it shouldn't go too far from where it is because that's part of its history is that it's right there on the tracks.
So, Bill, did you say that part of the old train station is, is being used by the museum?
Yeah, so this, this part of the building right here, that's, this, this is the original train station.
Right.
And there is, there is a museum in there. I mean, they have artifacts, they have old railroad memorabilia, they have some really neat stuff there. And then this dark side, this dark part off the end here, get a little closer, this, this dark part off the end right here is in addition, that's where they have their model train layout and operate, an operating layout in there.
Yeah. So it's, I guess I'm going back to, the, the idea of moving this seemed to have come, been introduced without any discussion with the Railway Association or, or the members to see if they're interested in it, is that correct?
Well, it was a study. It was a study, Sherman.
But I mean, the study was, didn't, didn't involve them.
No, no, the stu, right. The study was done, done for us in West Rutland is like, here's a list of things you can pursue.
Right. And my only reason to bring that up is I think the next step is to talk to the members of the, the association to see where they are on this. the association to see where they are on this, because there may be some reasons for keeping it there.
Yeah.
That we're not aware of.
Yep. And a- another thing might be that, uh, they're looking for financial help to promote it better. And maybe that's a role that can, the town can play there.
So, is that, can you see that picture better?
Yeah.
Okay, so, it's kinda handy, look at that. So, holding. I can't, I can't move the picture, but that's where the, that's the new addition. And this is the museum part of it. And then there's a caboose right, right off the left-hand side of that picture. There's a, there's an old caboose there that they're working on restoring. So, so that's, that's what they've got. So it would, it would mean in moving that entire facility.
It would be a significant undertaking. I don't know whether the consultants thought about the money involved. I thought we, Dana, when we went there a couple of years ago, didn't we go into the caboose, and wasn't that part of the?
We, we went into the main building. I don't remember if we went, we might have gone into the caboose because that fellow was really quite enthusiastic about the Rail Museum. But I do remember coming out the back door and, and taking a step, and you can see it, the, the back door is white uh, at the, on the, uh, left side, right by the telephone pole, yep.
Yep.
And when you step out that door, you're practically on the tracks.
Yeah, you can see that. It's-
Yeah. I mean, there, there is a safety, uh, issue here.
Right, and they, they know that. The people who operate the Rail Museum, I think they have signage inside. Norman, if, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, that says, uh, operating danger, uh, operating, uh, rail tracks within six feet or something like that. And, and there's a big sign, uh, inside on the other side of that white door that says basically, don't open the door.
Okay.
I, I don't-
Okay, everybody. Okay, Norm, um, let's, uh, I think that's enough discussion on this. I, I think, you know, the next step will be to, to get some of members of the association in, and, uh, just to, uh, acquaint them with the study recommendations. Let them acquaint us with what their mission is and, and some other details. So we'll work on that for June 4th.
Sounds good.
Okay. Yeah?
Uh, the, the first thing I think that we could pursue that would have minimal cost and maximum benefit would be, uh, looking at what it takes to get a historic brown sign. You know, showing that it's, I don't know, a half a mile uh, in each direction, and then maybe a sign pointing to the Railway Museum right at the corner of Depot Lane.
Yep.
Uh, because if we can get that from the state, and it's owned by the state, and the state wants to help us promote, uh, the, the Rail Museum, then it would be a great partnership and cost us very little, and show people that we're actually working towards, uh, promoting our uh, historic heritage and, uh, the value of the, uh, local artifacts, so.
Yeah, and maybe some information when the Pocket Park, um, happens, maybe some information down there, you know. Head up the, head up the hill and take in the museum. Bill, thank you very much for the, the tour.
You really raised the bar, Bill, and, uh, our expectations now. That was great.
Okay, let's move on, um, to the, um, stormwater map, ordinance map that, uh, Watershed Consulting has done for us. Um, so, uh, I, I know there's some, some bugs in there, and so I'd like us to spend as much time as we need to go, go through the map, play with it, and so we can get back to Watershed and let them know, uh, what needs to be fixed. There is no rush because, um, we can't pay for this yet. We cannot pay them for their services uh, because of the spending freeze with the town. So, um, that's unfortunate for the consultant, but, uh, it gives us a little more time to, to look at this map. And I know, I mean, there's, there's, there's some weird things. There's some weird blue polygons that are just kinda show up in the map. I don't know what they are.
Oh, are you talking about the, like, inclusions of the watershed boundary?
Yeah.
I think those are just, um, just whatever software the, is used to come up with the watershed boundaries. I think that's the estate layer problem. Not, I, I'll look into it, but I think that's based on just the watershed map from the state and not something that they're doing.
Yeah.
Just because, you know, just, um, I think whatever they use to come up with the watershed boundary, they use, you know, where the land drains.
Yeah.
And anyway, I'll, I can look into that more. It might not be what, something that they did.
Okay, okay, yeah. We can always ask them to. Wha- what does everybody think about this map? Do you think it's gonna be useful?
So, so I had it, when I looked at it, when I started to look at it, I had expected to, for the map to have, uh, a, a little more information in it to let me know where I was, like, maybe street names. Or, in, in fact, ideally, there'd, there'd be some number associated with each property line, each, each area of property. But in looking at it, I found, I had to have a good idea of, of the area in order to find what I wanted on the map. For instance, I looked from my house, and I had to know where it was and to know where to go on the map.
You can, you can search it, though, and type in your address.
Ah, that's what I didn't do. I didn't know that.
So- That's in the upper left.
Yeah.
The upper left, there's a box you can just type in, and it'll, it'll give you every address in the country that has that number and street name.
I, I saw the box and, and didn't register.
Yeah.
So Barbara, this is Dana. Um, I, I went in and I clicked around and, uh, I was expecting more under Landowner Resources and Stormwater Ordinance. And a lot of them went to the same document, and this one document's 25 pages. I don't think that's terribly helpful because I'm not sure who's gonna read 25 pages uh, when they're looking for something that's quick and easy.
So are you referring, Dana, are you referring to, it's, um, it says, okay, on this parcel, um, you are impacted by, by, uh, sections or Articles 4 and 7?
Ordnance Articles 4, 5, 6, 7. If you click on a property, yeah, and I'm clicking on the big rectangle, uh, in red, um, up, uh, in the, um, on the eastern side where it's, it's the top of Mussy Brook, and it says 1 of 10. I had some difficult, I mean, I had some difficulties navigating through with this. Uh, at one point, it was covering, the, uh, the pop-up was covering the actual properties, so you couldn't see them. And some of them just seem weird. Like, when I click on 4 of 10, I get all of this blue highlighting up well away from the, um, um, the property, and I can't see what property I've clicked on.
What do you mean by four, what do you mean by 4 of 10?
Well, if you click on it, Mary Beth, if you click on one of the red areas, you're going to get a number. And you, you can scroll through, and it says 1 of 10, 2 of 10, 3 of 10, 4 of 10.
It's pages of information.
Oh, on the same property? No, is it?
Yes, yep. It should be.
On that property, it means that there are 10 things that apply?
No, it, it means, um, it can mean a combination of things. Um, it's, I don't know if it always goes back to the ordinance, but it, it should, it has a separate page of information for 1, 2, 3, and on. And each one of those pages should be giving you different information. They, they should be.
Yeah, not much, not really. A lot of it's the same.
So I see something, I'm seeing something different, like, if I, so you're in the top right property above Mussy Brook? Is that right?
The top right property, right. It's, it's on the eastern boundary with Mendon.
Yeah. Okay, so when I-
Or, it says, uh, 1 of 10, well, it depends on which slide you're on, but multiples of 10, something of 10. So the first one that says 1 of 10, says Stormwater Ordinance Zone, Stream Buffer. Applicable Stormwater Ordinance Articles 4, 5, 6, 7. And then Landowner Resource, which pops up, the Stream Corridor Protection.
Yeah.
Barbara?
Yep.
Do you see what I have in mine when I click on it? It's-
You've got the small box, the small box that's right by the red trying, uh, red, um, polygon. But then you also have something else popped up in the background.
Background.
On to the right. Do you have two pop-ups?
Hmm, then I have a legend, but I only have one pop-up. Uh, let's see.
What's up, and what's up above your pop-up? My pop-up looks like yours, right by the, um, red.
Yeah. What's up?
And what's up above it? What's behind it and up to the right? That bigger pop-up.
Oh, that's the legend.
That's what?
The legend? You know, showing the, um, elements of the map, you know.
For some reason, I don't have that, but maybe your Zoom did more, and that's what will pop. Nope.
Yep.
You must have to click on something to get the legend.
Okay.
Yep, I did. I clicked on the, yep.
I'm getting what Mary Beth is getting.
Okay.
You actually have to click on the legend and the three, uh, horizontal bars over to the left under the-
That opens up the legend, yes.
Yeah, it opens up automatically.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
I see that.
So we'll, we'll be noting all this stuff. Norm, did you have a question?
Yeah. Um, my sense is that this is not very clear at all, and somebody, a citizen who is suddenly faced with a problem will have a lot of difficulty working with this in its present form. I could, frankly, I'm looking at something now that says 1 of 76. Now, my assumption is that 76 different owners within that area.
No. No, I doubt there would be 76 owners of one parcel.
No, I, well, that, that's my concern, is it, I thought it applied to a neighborhood. You're saying it applies to a parcel. What is the 76? In that?
Pieces of information on that parcel.
I'm sorry?
I think it's pieces of information on the parcel. Some are 1 of 2, some are 1 of 4, some are 1 of 10.
Well, I went through that. Um, and I don't know why it's different. I mean, if you start off and say, and I click through 5 or 10 or 15, and I just was, the point is, it's confusing.
Yep.
Um, and we're all obviously, you know, I, I confess, I'm probably the most technologically handicapped, but, um, having said that, I'm sure I'm not alone. And if this, this is designed for the average citizen to find out whether he can build a shed or not, or her shed, or their shed, um, I'm not sure this does it.
Okay, so this is not the end-all for everyone's, uh, for information for, for people and, and this ordinance. This, this can be used by Bill and Howard as well when they get questions. People call in and say, you know, do I fall in this watershed? Um, so, you know, it's, it's probably not designed for the average citizen. It's another option to offer our residents, and probably the more technically savvy of them to, to just get the information faster, or, or, or get a bigger, a, a better picture of whether, or an optional picture of whether they fall into these areas.
So what I would suggest, Barbara, is if, if we're going to use this as some type of a tool, educational tool, let somebody do a, um, a YouTube video demonstrating what those boxes are, and that there be a link uh, somehow placed on the, uh, on the website for people to understand how to navigate it.
I nominate Mary Beth.
And not what? Not Mary Beth?
I nominate Mary Beth.
You nominate Mary Beth. I'll second that.
Okay.
Your nomination's closed.
All in favor? Hi.
Barbara?
I hate YouTube videos, but anyway.
As long as I'm just talking and showing, I don't care.
There could just be some, some, um, some written instructions on if you want to do this, here are the steps. Uh, not necessarily cover everything that people would want, but some of the things that, that we know to come up.
Yeah, we might be able to work with a consultant a little bit on this, too, if we have any money left over.
Barbara, let, let me follow up what we were talking about for a minute, if I may. If, if what I'm pointing to um, is, and it, it highlights, it, it's in the middle of a, it looks like a subdivision. I'm, it's on the, um, east side near, near Mendon, near the, what I assume is the Mendon border and Town Line Road. If there are 76 pieces of information applying to this one parcel, that's overwhelming.
Right, I don't think there is, Norm. I don't thi- I think that's probably an error.
Well, I don't know, but-
Well, I just found 60.
Yeah, not, not isolated. You moved that cursor.
Are there actually, just a minute, Norman, there are actually 60 pages there of information? In that information box?
I'm checking. There are five. Uh, it's highlight, it's doing the same thing it was doing on mine when I had 1 of 10. Uh, no, it's actually moving around parcels. So these parcels are out, uh, outside of the, um, actual buffer zone, I think. And so, uh, I, it's clicking from small parcel to small parcel. So Norman must have clicked on something that is in the, um, I'll call it, um, the beige area where they're all closely clustered together. And it seems to me like it's bouncing between parcels.
Yeah, yeah, I, I experienced that, too.
So there's, somehow there are 60 pieces of information clustered into a whole area. So right now, I'm on page 6 of 60. And it says Storm Ordinance Zone, Rutland Town, applicable Stormwater 7, but it's got a whole, um, series of blue lines going up through Rutland Town to the north and, and spreading out. So I don't know.
Okay, okay. Um, so what, why don't everybody, um, play with this, write down your observations. And we've got three weeks. Next meeting, we'll put this list together for Watershed. Um, if you can see some trends of errors out there, that'd be great. What, Norm?
Well, what I was gonna say is that it's hard, it's awfully hard to describe. I think Dana hit the nail on the head, and I'm not sure even, um, I still think it, it has to do with the parcels in the area. I'm looking 1 of 76. Each time I click it, now I'm on 8, this little-
We just, we just talked about that, Norm. We just talked about that, okay? Um, it's, it's jumping around and adding, um, information to that box. So that's an error. That's an error. So we've noted that, okay? And so, you know, we've got, we've got more than 400 parcels here, so it's, it's going to be, it's not gonna be the easiest thing to navigate. And some of the, and many of the parcels are very small. Because it's very suburban in there. So Howard, do, do you have anything you wanna add, or Jim?
No, this is Howard. I guess, I guess not. Not at this time. We'll just take and play with it and see what shakes out of it.
Yeah, that's who we'd be looking for, looking for, Howard. This is Dana. You know, I, I can play around with all kinds of things, but unless I know what I'm looking for, I can't give, uh, cogent feedback or intelligent, I can't even formulate intelligent questions.
Well, um, do a review of, uh, just a, a short- Well, do a review of, just a short, and don't spend a lot of time with this. Do a review of this online feature. And what you like about it, what doesn't work for you. And let's, let's start there.
Yeah, so let me, let me offer something that I can at least throw out to the group in terms of seeing whether I'm on the right page or not. I like the color shadings that go along Moon Brook and Mussey Brook. But what I can't tell is, I can't tell what is within the, the buffer zone and what is within the watershed, and what's not.
They're different colors, and what's in the buffer zone are the parcels that touch those two brooks, that, that border those brooks.
Yeah, that's what I thought, the red ones.
I, I don't have it right in front of me, but.
It's the colored ones as opposed to the, the non-colored ones, the beige ones.
Yeah.
And, and so, but it doesn't really say that. It just refers to the ordinance. And it would be helpful if it said that they were in the buffer zone as opposed to the watershed, the general watershed.
I thought it did. I'll have to double-check that.
It does in legend, but it doesn't when you click on it.
Right, and that's my point. I mean, you have to do extra things to find out that information. And what would be helpful to me is it says, "You are in the buffer zone," or "You are in the watershed."
Absolutely, yeah.
And so that's, that's my, that's the biggest contribution I can make.
Well, just, just, if you remember the ordinance, there are only, there are only, you know, you can tell by those numbers whether you're in the buffer zone or not. You know, if you, if you get familiar enough with the ordinance, which, you know, we don't work with it very often.
People who might be going in to try to find out for the first time aren't going to be familiar enough with the ordinance. So what would be helpful is if the pop-up box says in the first thing, "This is what applies to you." And then you can refer to the ordinance and gain more information. Because are there things on this map that are not even affected by the ordinance? No. So I click over on the complete west side of town, and it's still referring me to the Stormwater Ordinance for Rutland Town. Well, that's because it's a general stormwater award. But it doesn't say that you're not affected. It doesn't say that you're not in the, in the, this property is not in the buffer, nor is it in the watershed.
Okay, okay.
But it seems to indicate that, that it still applies to you.
Okay. Problems like that could possibly be the, at least minimize if there's some instructions that go along with some written instructions, or directions in using this. I, I wouldn't expect it to be anything where you could pick it up and just use it without having some direction. Especially me, because I looked at it and didn't realize I could type an address in. If I'd had a write-up, I would have known a little bit more and could have gotten a little further.
Right, right. Okay, okay. Is everybody clear with that? We'll just, we'll come back to this next meeting and hopefully have some clear comments and suggestions for watershed consulting. Okay?
This was helpful. This discussion was helpful.
Yeah, just remember, this is a tool, this is a tool. You know, we don't expect, it's, it's not going to answer all the questions these, these residents, these landowners have. But it just gives them an idea that, it should give them an idea of whether they are affected by the ordinance or not.
That's my whole point, Barbara, that if, if it lets them know that it applies to them or not. So for example, I just typed in my address, and it brings up my, my house on the Google map and everything. And it just gives my address. It doesn't give anything related to the Stormwater Ordinance.
You're not affected at all by the ordinance, Dana?
Right, no, no.
Not at all.
Right.
Why does she say that?
Well, I guess my question.
That would be a whole lot more work, Norm, and probably another 1,500 times three.
So what I'm, I guess I'm looking at is, if I go over onto the west side of town, I'm wondering why it pops up. I don't know what, I don't even know what this address is. So I can't tell you.
Well, Dana, one of our instructions is going to be, you know, if you live on the western side of town, don't, don't even bother with this map. This is, this does not pertain to you.
Well, that's what I thought, but it's still popping up Stormwater Ordinance as opposed to just popping up the information about my, my address, which is on the.
It's not going to have your information. We didn't pay for that.
I'm not sure what you mean.
Barbara, you know, I think Sherman, Sherman has a.
Hi Ken, I'm, I'm gonna have to go, folks.
Oh, sorry, Andy, okay.
But I, I wish I could stay on with, for the discussion further, but my son is here from Las Vegas and I, we have a commitment to go to this evening. I didn't expect it to go along. It's good seeing everybody, and I'll probably see everybody in person on the 4th.
Take care.
Take care. Thanks. Good night.
Good night.
So I guess what I'm trying to figure out, because I can put all of this into, into some succinct document, but I need to know what I'm focusing on. And so this property that I clicked on over on the west side of town towards, towards Proctor, shows Stormwater Ordinance Zone, Rutland Town.
Dana, Dana, the map expands, you can expand it and it'll show you California.
I understand that.
It just, so what, what we, what we did with this map is we took the comments from the public meeting in October, where people who lived in that area, they were the ones invited to that meeting, live in the watershed, said, "We don't know whether, you know, what applies to us, and we don't know whether we fall into the, the general watershed or in the buffer area." So we'll need to give instructions that this map only contains good, valid information for those who live in those two, two areas. It's really one big area, the watershed, but, so it's not for the town as a whole. It's just for that subsection of the town.
I know that. I know that that's what the intent is. But I'm telling you that there are things in there that are outside that are confusing, because it still references it, and the person probably is not in the watershed nor in the, in the buffer zone. And that should be removed, because if I go to my property, it says nothing, which is great. That's what it should say.
But you wouldn't be directed to that. You would, if, if you're not in those areas, you, you wouldn't be directed to use it. I mean, it's, it's a tool that's only to be used by people in those areas.
Well, maybe what they should do is just make everywhere that's not part of the ordinance-affected area, just make it black. So when you go to your property, you get a message, you know, or something, or you can see that it doesn't apply to you. Maybe not, or dark gray, or something that's very obvious, not like bright green.
Well, that's my point, Mary Beth, that only those things within the watershed area demarcated by the blue line should have any information around the ordinance. Everything else should just give the property address.
And just say clearly that you're not affected.
Yeah, whether it states that or not. I mean, somebody could be looking to buy a property. It's not just for the property owners who, who are here. Somebody's coming from New Jersey, but I'll pick on New Jersey.
You know, I think that.
Just a minute, Norm.
They're looking at properties, and they see this blue area on the map, and this is go to our website. It should, it should be showing things about that, only about the watershed area, and not about the rest of the town. That's all, that's my point. So if you, if that information is important, I'll be happy to put that down into some type of a document. But if it's, if we're not gonna, if that's what people don't want to know, then I'm not going to waste my time.
Well, yeah, I was thinking more of like bullets in, in, in this list that we come up with. Norm?
Thank you. What I was thinking, I think Sherman has the right idea. I think, and a lot of our concerns could be answered by a one-page introduction. Like, "This applies to, this is not intended to do this." This is not, if you have questions after reviewing this, you must, or, after reviewing this, you must confirm your understanding with the town administrative officer or whoever is involved in the enforcement of this. So that its scope is limited, and we're not tied to it. It's a tool, we have to make it clear that it is a tool, it is not an answer. And I think that has to be said in the introduction, if I understood Sherman's remarks. I think that's what he was suggesting. I like it. I don't like to tell him I like it, but I like it.
Okay, I have another, as I've been playing around, Barbara, I'm gonna share something else with you. If you are on this map of Rutland Town, and you click on it, anywhere in Rutland Town, it will give you that same information, and it will have anywhere from one of two to one of 25 links. If I click on the area that's supposed to be where my, my house is located, it pops up. If I type in my address, and so I'd like to know from Bill, what, give me an address, Bill, or, or Howard, in that buffer zone, that you know that I can type in, because it's not showing if you type in an address. So if I go and type in my address, it does not show this information. If I click on the map, if I click on the map, the area where my location is, I get the same dialog box that says Stormwater Ordinance Zone for Rutland Town. So if somebody can give me a, a, an address in that buffer area, I will click on it and see what happens.
Give me a second, I'll get you an address here in just a second. Try 533 Gleason Road.
533 Gleason Road. Oh, what's going on here? Hang on. Just lost my box. Gleason, R-O-T-D, Rutland, Vermont. Nope, doesn't pop up.
What address was that, Bill?
You have to click on it.
533 Gleason Road.
Is it, is it a residence?
Yeah.
You have to, if you click on it, you get more information. And then it says Stormwater Ordinance Zone. More info, but it doesn't, it doesn't give you the one of however many.
How about trying like 23 Joshua Place? That kind of comes to my mind. I think that might be a number right on a brook.
And that's, yep, let's see. 23 Joshua Place. Yep, it's right by the brook. One of two. Oops. One of two, 23 Joshua Place. Yeah, Stream Buffer. Then it pops up. You have to click on it twice. Then it pops up, and it gives you applicable Stormwater Ordinance Articles 4, 5, 6, and 7. Gives you landowner resources and Stormwater Ordinance link. So it does say there, after you've clicked on it twice, it's in the Stream Buffer.
What do you mean, click on it twice?
So you, when you put, when you click on the, when the address pops up, you have to click, it will pop up with a little box giving you the information around the address. Then you have to click on it to open it, and then it will show you your, oops, what happened?
That sounds pretty normal.
I'm just saying that, to navigate and know what you're doing, we've just spent, I've just spent talking to you probably 20 minutes. And I had previously gone in and tried to navigate through it. So if somebody is expecting to get information from it, we need a little bit more to help guide them to find the information.
Okay, I think we've, we've said that several times now, that we need some instructions to go along with this. So that's duly noted. Any, any other general comments about this? I mean, it, it is going to be a little bit hard to play with. I mean, you do need some actual addresses. So I mean, if you want to, you know, maybe Howard, if you could send us out some sample addresses to try in that area. I was wondering about the, the Gables area, but I didn't know the exact address up there.
Well, it's Heritage Hill Place is the one that's got the corner of it right there.
And I think Howard has mentioned, I mean, when we did the mailing, when we did the mailing, we aggregated all of those parcels into one. And so we might have to tease those apart now. That's one of the things I was thinking we'd have to double-check. Because, you know, if we have just one big area, this ordinance or certain articles of it may not apply to the whole, you know, combined parcel at Heritage Hill. So Howard, are you okay with that? Maybe just sending us a list? Some sort of a list of addresses in the watershed that we could play with?
Sure, I, I'll do that, no problem.
It's not too, that's not a big deal?
No, it isn't. I'll do it for you.
Okay, thank you.
Hey Howard, can I ask for a couple of addresses that are up on the, either the northwest or northeast side of town so that we can see something that's not in the buffer and what information pops up there?
Okay, so you want me to include? You want me to include some addresses that will, that are not in a buffer area?
Right, just so people can compare, yeah.
That might be confusing, Dana. Let's just get a list from Howard of what's in, what's covered by the ordinance. And, you know, just play around, you know, just put some other addresses you must know, people you must know in town, put their addresses in.
Okay.
Look at the phone book or something.
We need to also come to some agreement at some point on what we expect this to be. And Dana, it sounds like you want it to be everything for everyone, where anyone who signs on can get some answers. And I think that it should be limited to those people who are in the buffer zone or.
Right, and that information that does not apply to the buffer zone or to the watershed should not, it shouldn't, it shouldn't pop up with information that seems to imply that there's a Stormwater Ordinance apply, applicable to your property.
And I would say that anyone who's, anyone who's using that address shouldn't be using it. Shouldn't be. So it's, it's a matter of opinion. That's why I say we should agree on it, because I disagree with you, that's all.
Yeah, and that might be, and correct me if I'm wrong, Bill or Mary Beth, that may not be a hard, hard thing to fix, just to.
Right, we could.
Mask those areas somehow.
We could go back to the, the ones that are helping create this and say like, you know, how hard would it be to block out all the addresses it doesn't apply to? So people go look, and it doesn't even show up. Like, if you search and get no result, you're good. And, you know, just, just address that data. So we, I mean, it's.
Because my house says Stormwater Ordinance Zone, Rutland Town.
Yeah.
And it says Stormwater Ordinance link, and it gives it to me.
We don't want to make it more confusing.
Nope.
Okay. Okay. I think we, thank you, Howard, and thank you, Bill, and thanks, everyone, for going through that already. And we'll just spend a little more time on that, if you don't mind, before we, you know, combine all of our comments for watershed. The next thing on the agenda is, several of you have asked from time to time, you know, what our budget to actuals look like, so I just sent those out. We're not big spenders. And our budget's in fine shape, freeze or no freeze. We've got approximately 6,000 left in our budget, which should, as far as I know, we're still, we're still getting paid for meetings, right, Bill?
Yes, payroll's not affected.
This expires June 30?
Yes.
Yeah, well, it goes to the end of the fiscal year, and I don't think they've decided what's going to happen the next fiscal year, Bill. Yeah.
Carrie had said at the meeting last night that, that our, the taxes coming in are on par with.
the, the taxes coming in are on par with years past, and we still have a couple of days of postmarks to go for people to still send them in and be considered on time. So so far, we seem to be doing good with, with tax payments on side of it. The concern from the select board, it was the 1% local tax option, which is about a million dollars a year that we don't have to pay in taxes. So that, that's where that concern was coming from.
Did they? Did they give any indication of how far behind the town was in, in that piece of revenue?
We, well, that was talked about at the previous board meeting, and we had projected $1 million for, for, for local tax income. And before the, this whole thing put everything to a stop, we were actually gonna exceed that number for, for this fiscal year. So things were, were looking good. And then it seemed like they anticipated being on track, but that's, that's an office across the hall you'd have to ask to be sure, so. You had your chance earlier today.
Shush.
Okay. Any questions on that?
Is it frozen through the end of the year, or is it frozen temporarily, or what's the?
Fiscal year.
Going fiscal year.
It's frozen through the rest of the fiscal year.
Six weeks.
So no, no expenditures other than payroll unless they're emergency will be authorized.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, uh, uh, more than $500, the board is requesting to come to them first. But they are still making purchases. The, the fire department got a grant, and they needed to spend the money, pay for it and to get reimbursed, and they authorized the expenditure last night. So, and it was like $9,800. So they are still spending the money, being mindful that, you know, there's budgets for this year and budgets for next year, and we don't wanna stop spending all, necessarily everything out of this year's budget because we can't overload next year's budget. Because if we don't have the money coming in then, which the point of putting it off now is to help pay for it then, then we don't want to end up in the same boat. So the highway department's the only department that gets to carry over their budget surplus year over year. Everybody else goes back in the general fund, which is what they're trying to help protect. So we don't go into a deficit and have to raise taxes next year to cover the deficit.
Right, because what happens with the, the, the surplus in the FY, whatever we are, 20 budget gets turned into revenue for the FY 21 budget.
It goes into the capital improvement fund. So we, the town, town is not, obviously not-for-profit, so any money not spent goes into the capital improvement fund, which they've used for things like the office remodel and things like that. So it goes into that for capital expenditures.
Okay, but so it's not going to actually help offset the general fund budget for FY 21?
Not for, not for July 1, no. That's based upon tax revenue and things like that. So that's, so there's, there's, I, I'm not entirely versed on all this, but I, I do know enough to be kind of dangerous. So, uh, next year, we get, we get into July 1, and we're, we're being funded by tax income right now because the next tax payment is like
September.
September. So the money we're getting right now helps us, we, we have a, there's an opening fund.
Yep.
It has an opening fund for July 1 that we start spending money out of, that the tax payments in September help to recover that opening fund.
Right. It's your, it's your, it's your cash flow balance that allows you to operate.
Where some towns have to borrow that money to make that July and August gap. We have it sitting in a bank account, and then we spend it, and then we put it back in September.
Because the, the surplus goes into that capital fund, and you can use that as a slush, as a, as a pass-through fund while you're waiting for it to come back?
They're two different things. So the capital improvement fund is set aside for, like they did a roof extension on the transfer station.
Yep.
It was out of the capital fund. So rather than absorbing a larger expense on, on a, on a, on a department budget, the, the town has a fund that, that, that pays for that. So obviously you have to have surpluses year over year to
To fund it.
And they don't want to do that necessarily, because then you're, the tax rate's too high. So, you know, look at that too, but you know, my municipal tax rate is $400 on my taxes, so I'm not really worried about that. It's the school that's the big number on my taxes. So, you know, same, same for, for all of us. So the, the, the money we're, we're saving right now is to make sure that, you know, and I think the, the tax is being paid, and the 1% report that we got looks like we're, we're on track. The next 1% payment, I think that's July or August, I'd have to ask Carrie, but that's be more telling about how we're gonna do it next year than anything else.
That, yeah, that'll affect the FY 21 budget.
Right. That's gonna have the impact on it. That, that, because our, our town budget is, unfortunately, $2.7 million, 1.2 million is raised by taxes, and another $1 million comes from the local 1% option. So without 1% option, that changes the tax burden on everybody else. So that's important. So that's, that's why they are stopping the spending, because we, we want to make sure that, you know, if we need to, we can, we can recover from that.
So how, how will that transfer be made from this year's general fund? Then, if it all goes into the capital improvement fund? You don't know?
I don't know. That's outside my area of expertise.
Okay.
Different office.
Thanks.
Maybe I'll ask.
Yeah, you can, you can, you can try Carrie, Dana, or, or just maybe someone on the select board.
I'm curious now, because my, my budget brain doesn't know how to process the somewhat conflicting information that Bill has in his understanding. So.
There's, there's, there's a lot, there's, there's money that comes in, there's money that goes out, and somewhere in the middle, magic happens. Like, that's kind of what I know.
Right, and it's my business to make sure that no funny business happens.
Well, and, you know, and we, we have Andrew Peish, we have Ian Peish that does our auditing for us every year too. So he's, he's a, he's a, you know, makes sure he's on top of that as well. And, you know, and, and I know that Kirsten and, and, you know, would call him and Carrie would call him when they, they have questions. Okay, so how do I handle this? And he can give some guidance on the best way to do that. So.
You know what we're trying to achieve as a, as a target for the, for the reserve?
No. Well, for our opening fund?
Just reserve carryover from this year's general fund that the freezes implemented.
I, I don't know. There, there really wasn't, when they talked about it, it was just kind of like, uh, we're gonna stop spending. And, you know, the only thing you can, you know, if you have an expense, you need to come to the board and ask us, and then if we approve it, you can go forward. And that's kind of basically been it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, let's, we've been carrying on for quite a while here. Let's go to the minutes of April 23rd and, and wrap this puppy up.
Got some corrections.
Uh, Mary, Mary Beth, are you?
Sorry, sorry, I was muted. Can I, um, I have one short discussion before we do the minutes?
Short discussion?
Yeah, yeah. Um, so.
On what? On what?
On ethics, the form that we signed, and the town ethics. I'm sorry, it's not on the agenda, but I've just been thinking recently. Bill, you know, the Ranbury Road project?
Yes.
I work for Otter Creek Engineering, as you guys know, and we're working on a, the project with the town. So I just wanted to let everyone know that I'm working on the project and air any ethics, you know, discussions. I don't know if I should, I mean, the select board knows, Bill knows, but I just wanted to make it clear to everyone.
Uh, Mary Beth, what's your role?
Um, so I'm doing administrative work, and I may go out and help the resident on the project. So it's starting probably in August. So, um, yeah, so I'm not, you know, the, there's a different project manager, but I'm gonna be helping, you know, mostly administratively with the project, as, as the town's representative for the project with the contractor.
Okay.
The contract, the contract's approved, the contract's signed, so, I mean, there's no, there's, I don't like any, any issue on, on our end with that.
Right, but you did the right thing by bringing it to our attention.
Yeah.
I'm not clear on, on what the project is. Her voice is not coming through to me.
We're, we're digging, we're adding a water, a municipal water line down Ranbury Road.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Jim, did you, did you want to say something? I saw you light up there for a second.
No.
Okay, all right, just checking, just checking. Okay, let's go back to the minutes of April 23rd.
Motion to approve the minutes of April 23rd.
Thanks, Dana. Thanks, Sherman.
I have some, I think, typos to bring to your attention, if I may.
Yep, go ahead, Norm.
On the first page, under new business, the fourth bullet says there is no zooming in Rutland Town. Should that be zoning?
Well, there is zooming, but that should be zoning.
I'm sorry?
You're right, you're right.
Okay, thank you. On the next page, I have a question for you, Barbara. Under the second bullet, something was not clear to me. It said the select board has not decided if they want to intervene with the process. The new policies were communicated, the board voted four to one to send the letter. And I don't know whether that was our letter or a different letter.
Our letter? It was a letter that the select board did with myself.
Yeah, there's, there's only one letter.
Was it the letter?
I sent you a copy of it. I sent everybody a copy of it.
So they, they voted to authorize you to send a letter that will contain the comments on that new project?
Pretty much. The letter hadn't been written yet when they did the four to one vote. The, the four to one is to put together and send the letter.
Okay, fine. Which just wasn't clear the way it was there. Um.
I think it's fine.
Okay. Old business. Second bullet, third sub-paragraph, beginning, Mr. Hall discussed carous reals, and it says ANDS. I think it should be and said, the S should be deleted.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, good.
Okay, and let me see if there's another one. Oh. At the top of that paragraph, first bullet, Mr. Hunter discussed doing sites visits or site visits?
Yeah, should be just site.
That's all from my nitpicking. That's all I have.
That's pretty good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Did you get those, Bill?
I did.
I have two on page one. Under new business, one, two, three, four, five, six bullet, I think it should be discussed, not discusses.
Yes, agreed.
Uh, and the second is, actually, is that a typo? I don't know. Uh, I have a bullet circled. The land use map was added to the town plan. Oh, I know what it was. Under new business, it's irrelevant, because these were the points that you were bringing forth from the discussion at the select board meeting, I think, Barbara. But it's not just that the land use map was added, but the land use map was changed and added.
Yeah.
So what I have as a note is that it was, it was changed and added, because it being, I'm not sure, wasn't it always part of the town plan? It just?
Well, we, what happened is that they wanted to pass the town plan in 2016, I think.
Yep.
And, and, but they didn't have time to work on the map, the land use map at that point. So they went ahead and adopted the town plan, and then the planning commission did change the land use map, and the town plan was re-adopted a couple of years after that.
I, I, I think for clarity purposes, it, it should state that the land use map was changed and added. I mean, anybody's reading the minutes, because the land use map, that was one of the things why the land use map was added, because we were working on changes. So.
Yeah, yeah.
That's up, up to someone above my pay grade for determining that. That was my only comment.
No, it's a good one. That's a good one.
Thank you.
Okay. Any others? Looking at faces, I don't see anybody. Okay, so, um.
I'll make a motion to, to approve the minutes with corrections.
Sherman, did you do the second?
Yes, I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. All right, so. Good. Anything else for this meeting?
Yeah. Did I hear that the next meeting is gonna be in person on the 4th?
We don't know that for sure, right, Bill?
No, we, we're not sure yet.
Okay, I must have misunderstood. Thank you.
There, there is some discussion about, about maybe doing some select board meetings in person. I think, I don't know, we're, we're kind of large, so.
As long as the number is under 10, and you ensure physical distancing with appropriate face coverings, you can have a meeting of 10 or fewer people.
Yeah, yeah, I know that. I'm, I'm not.
As long as the space is rated for, what is it, 25% of physical occupancy.
Right. I'm not sure we meet that. I'm not sure I'm, I'm comfortable even trying to meet that.
If we, if we don't use Zoom, we lose Bill's expertise that he exhibited tonight.
The, the screen sharing?
Yeah, it's a lot better than that, the, the meeting rooms technology.
Yes.
Oh, I, I got some other tricks too.
Good.
Ready? Wait, we're right. Ah, there you go.
Do you have themes for all of us, or you think of?
Now, it's a little weird with the lights off, but no.
I, I decided that I was too far in the weeds.
Got a beach. Well, I got a beach. There we go.
Is Burman Hill Farm, well, not Burman. Leave us there, Burman Hill Road.
And there's still snow, just like there is. Okay, anything else? Uh, we'll, we'll try to get, we'll try to get some railroad people in for the 4th, and meantime, we've all got some homework with the map. And Norm, you look like you're about, you want to say something, but no? Okay. Okay, all right. Anyone want to move to adjourn?
I so moved.
Okay, let's give it to Jim. And thank you all.
Okay.